Welcome to another Candidates Forum. This is our fourth Candidates Forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Willmar. I want everyone in our audience to know that tonight we are having a Candidates Forum for School Board election, and the School Board currently has four openings. We have six candidates. My name is Andrea Carruthers. I'm the moderator tonight, and we welcome four candidates. Two could not be with us tonight. Brian Cath is in California on a business trip and was unable to get a flight back in time for tonight. And Jackie Salisbury had to bow out this afternoon. So again, we are sorry we don't have all six, but we're very pleased to have four of our candidates answer questions that have come to us from our audience as well as the general public and members of the League of Women Voters. Just to remind everyone, this particular broadcast is live on Rack TV at this time. Channel 18 is the public access channel, and 181 is the Charter Communication Channel. And then after this evening, you can seek this Candidates Forum on demand at our city website, which is willarmind.gov, on the KWM radio website where you can listen to this videotape, and also our own Willmar area League of Women Voters Facebook page has it on demand for the coming days ahead. A reminder to everyone, election is about two and a half weeks away. And remember the date, November 8th. Get out to vote. It is so important that you vote your heart and your head, and you make sure that you vote for all of our local contests. Very, very important for School Board, for city, for county, our own state of Minnesota, and of course, the national elections. To begin with tonight, each of our four candidates will have an opportunity to make opening statements, two minutes in length, and then we will begin our questioning. So we will start tonight with Scott Thaden. Please introduce yourself and tell us a bit about yourself.
Thank you, Andrea. My name's Scott Thaden. I am married to Kristin Thaden and dad to Madison, Julia, and David Thaden, all of whom are in the Willmar School District. I graduated from South Dakota State University with a Bachelor of Science in Agricultural Education, and came to Willmar as an ag teacher in the ag department, where I was there from 1995 to 2005 as a teacher and coach. We've lived in the area since 1995. I've been quite active in the community, everything from Sunday school teacher to volunteer soccer coach to serving on the planning commission for six years. I work for Southern Minnesota Beech Sugar Co-op in the ag department, and I believe that I'm uniquely qualified, given the opportunity to serve on the School Board because I have been a teacher. I've been in the trenches. I know what they're facing and what the teachers are dealing with and what a school district, how a school district operates. And I'm also on the outside looking in now as a community member and as a parent to three kids and wanting the best education for our members of our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. And now Mike Reynolds.
Thank you, Andrea. Hello, everybody. I'm Mike Reynolds. First of all, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for providing this forum to help educate the voters of the area on all the issues that are important, not only with this election, but with, again, all the local races. As a candidate for reelection for the Willmar School Board, I'd like to tell you a little bit more about myself for those of you who may not know me. I am married to Darla Reynolds. I currently serve as the Vice Chair of the Willmar School Board. I am a proud graduate of the Willmar Senior High School, and I'm also a fellow Jack Rabbit as well as with Scott here. I have been married for 30 years. I'm a member of Vingy Church. Our three boys have also been educated in the Willmar Public Schools, Anthony and Stephen, and then also Alex now who is a current sophomore at the University of Minnesota. The Reynolds family, including my kids and myself and my mother and my father-in-law, all received a fantastic education from the Willmar Public Schools, an education that prepared us for the next chapter of our lives. The robust course offerings as well as a broad spectrum of extracurricular activities and technology really make the Willmar Public Schools stand out. During my tenure as Board Member, I have served on many different committees, which has given me a great historical perspective and vast knowledge of all facets of Board operations. I also serve on the Minnesota School Board Association Delegate Assembly, a group which meets every year to form a platform for public education prior to each legislative session. I currently am employed as a Business Development Manager for New Park Mats and Integrated Services. I've always prided myself on my past and present community involvement. Besides my years on the School Board that I have served, I have also served on the Candyway County Sheriff's Reserve, the Willmar Hockey Association Board of Directors, the Barn Theater Board. I am a current Chairman of the Eagle Lake Sanitary Sewer Board. You know, who knew? I serve on the Willmar Public School Foundation, led a mission trip to the Vingy Church with 11 kids to Alaska, and just recently, I'm also a former substitute teacher. So again, I have been in the trenches. I'm getting the stop sign, so that's me.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. And on to Justin.
Yes, I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum and all the other forums. I'm Justin Boss. I live here in Willmar with my wife Sarah and our two children, one who is a seventh grader at the middle school and a fifth grader at Kennedy Elementary here. I also am a graduate of Willmar High School in 1996, went away for college and began my career, and then returned to Willmar in 2003 and have worked as a funeral director at Peterson Brothers Funeral Home since that time. I was fortunate enough to be elected to the School Board back just in May with the special election to fill the vacant seat there. So I've just had a short time on the Board, and in that short time, I've learned a lot and have a lot to continue to learn as well, too. But the reason I ran for School Board back in May and the reason I'm running again now is just the understanding of how vital a strong education system is to our community, not only in preparing our students for work or secondary education, but also for attracting businesses and other workers to come to our community as well, too. Like the other members, I've been active in a number of Boards in the community, Prairie Lake, I mean Prairie Woods Environmental Learning Center Board, active with the Shatoma Club, also at church, also with the Hockey Association, like Mike, and just wanted to get more involved with something that has more of a direct effect on the entire community and hope to continue to be able to serve on the Board for another term.
Thank you, Justin. And Tammy Barnes.
Thank you, Andrea. My name is Tammy Barnes, and I am a 13-year resident of Willmar. I am running because I want to help the district to provide the very best education for the students that we can here in Willmar. That means the best staff, the best classroom technology, and a safe welcoming environment. I've been, I'm a licensed teacher, K-6, Middle School in Math and Social Studies from the U of M Morris in Mankato State. I've been a teacher in the surrounding area, central Minnesota here, for 17 years. I've been a teacher negotiator, done a number of those kinds of things as a teacher in my past life. I also do a lot of things with the United Methodist Church, from doing chef as the community meal we have every month, working with the bazaar. I was a, and I am still a trustee, but I also worked on our church renovation. Excuse me. And in addition to doing those things, I've also been a foster parent for five years to teens in the Renville County area, and I was a swim instructor, lifeguard, pool manager, jack-of-all-trades, you know, those kinds of things. So in my experience, though, I find that students need adults who are going to be connecting with them throughout their day-to-day and their year-to-year experiences. And so Willmar Schools have many great staff, from the bus drivers to the support staff to the teachers and the administrators, and they do those kinds of connections. But I feel that as the Board, we need to do more to support them, and what I would like to do is build more relationships with community members, and I know as a president of my homeowners' association that everybody doesn't want the same things. But I'm prepared to listen and to work with the stakeholders, the employees, and do what we need to do to collaborate so that students have a ability to communicate, collaborate with others, think outside of the box, be honest, take care of themselves, and are going to be successful productive students when they leave the Willmar High School. Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, I would like to read a statement that Brian Cath sent to the League of Women Voters. He asked that we read the statement on his behalf, knowing he could not be with us tonight. "My name is Brian Cath. I've been a resident of Willmar, Minnesota since November of 2005. I had the opportunity to come to Willmar to be the General Manager of Menards. My wife of 16 years, Roseanne, and I have four children, Alexa, an eighth grader, Brendan, sixth grade, Heidi, a fifth grader, and Preston, second grade. After 19 years working retail for Menards, I had an opportunity for a career change. In January of 2015, I accepted the Operations Manager position with West Central Steel in Willmar, a locally owned and operated company. I am a graduate of Norfolk Catholic High School in Norfolk, Nebraska. Following high school, I attended Northeast Community College and the University of Nebraska prior to working for Menards. With four children in the Willmar School District, I have decided to run for Willmar School Board. I want to do what I can to help my children succeed along with other students. I believe that education is the most important thing for a young person, and I would like to be part of a team that can help make that better. My youngest daughter has hearing difficulties, so I have a special concern for the needs for the future funding and resources to help those children with special needs. Working in management, I have learned to make critical and sound decisions. Beyond my skills with decision-making, I have an even temperament and work well as a team to accomplish goals. Using these skills, I believe I can be an asset to the Willmar School Board. As a district, Willmar faces some major challenges. One of its most critical is to find a resolution to the teachers' union contract. We need an agreement that will work long-term for both teachers and the district to best serve the needs of our youth. Another challenge we face is a manageable plan to handle non-tenured teachers at the end of the school year. As of August 15th, the current School Board approved the new 2016-2017 Staff Handbook. In this handbook, all references regarding layoffs to non-tenured teachers were removed, and the practice stopped beginning this year. It helped offer more job stability to those non-tenured teachers. This is a step in the right direction as layoff teachers, as laying off teachers at the close of the year is a difficult way to improve the quality of our teachers, and it does not encourage the young teachers to come and make Willmar their home. Teachers need a stable working situation and an opportunity to grow with the students in the community to be most effective at helping our youth. The last major challenge of the district is the health of our current budget. Changing technology is playing a big part in the way our kids learn, and we need to be able to respond to those changes and remain current on them to help our kids be the best they can be. I hope to see the district achieve the most benefit for the kids out of each dollar spent and keep the cost as low as possible to the taxpayers." Thank you, Brian Cath. So we appreciate the time he took in bringing this to us, and now we'll begin questioning. We have a number of questions, and perhaps we'll get a few more. The first question, and we will begin with Tammy Barnes. What are you most proud of about our Willmar Public School System?
Well, I would say that there are exceptional employees, like I said, from the bus drivers to your support staff, to your teachers and administrators. You have excellent staff who are doing wonderful things. However, they could do more and better things if we can collaborate and do some things that support those teachers, support staff, administrators, get them the training they need so they can deal with some of the issues, bullying, technology, offering a variety of classes for students that are going to meet the needs of all the students, and that means a lot of different things because all students learn differently at different rates, and we're here to provide them an education. So I think there are a lot of great things that Willmar has and has done in the past. We're always looking, I think, there's always room for improvement, and so I think that we need to look to the future because that's what we're supposed to be doing is educating those kids to the future, and what that looks like, none of us really know, but I think we need to be able to have them communicate, collaborate. They definitely have to think outside of the box because that's when you get some of the best answers. And then they also need to be respectful and honest. They need to be hardworking and know that, you know, I can disagree with somebody, but yet be respectful. So I think there are a lot of great things going on here, but I think there's ability to do much more. Thank you.
Justin.
I would agree that we have great staff in our schools, but I would say I am most proud of our students. I think how our students are a great model of how our city should operate as a whole with the diversity in our schools, the way our students get along with each other and are inclusive. I think the rest of the city can learn a lot from them, and I'm sure the teachers also have a lot to do with passing that mentality along to our students as well.
You stole my thunder. One of the things I am most proud of is like, and I can honestly say, when I went to the Willmar Public Schools, Willmar was not a town of color. We were basically one color. And as we've evolved in this community and as my children went through the system and my tenure on the School Board, we have continued to graduate more and more children of color to the point where I don't think our kids in our school district even see color anymore. They just see other students, and they call them by name. And that's been really one of my proudest moments as I go to School Board conventions and I go to other places in the state of Minnesota, and I listen to other people's success stories about that they've made a small little gain, and I'm thinking to myself, wow, we did that two years ago. And so that makes me really proud from the standpoint of our staff working all together, closing the achievement gap, because I know our students come to us with varying degrees of readiness, and some barely speak, you know, not only their native language, but barely, you know, can't even speak the English language, and we have other kids that have gone to preschool and they're ready to go, and our staff works very good to close that gap and get kids out to and try to make them, get them on a level playing field as quick as they can. So some of those things that kind of go on behind the scenes is some of the things that make me most proud.
Thank you. And Scott.
I agree with everything that's been said so far. I'm pretty proud of the fact that we have addressed one of the biggest issues in our school district, which was the students crowding issues, the classroom crowding issues. With the new elementary school coming in, we've done a, we've taken a huge step forward in addressing that issue, and our community stepped up and paid the bill to do that and voted to pay the bill to do that, and I was pretty proud when that occurred.
Very good. On to the second question, and we'll begin with Justin Boss. What changes do you believe would help the district conduct business with greater transparency and effectiveness?
I think, you know, right now, the School Board is going through strategic planning sessions. I think continuing that, and that's part of that discussion, is how to be more transparent and more visible to the community and communicating better with them, but also having clear goals and policies in place so that the community knows what those are as well. So I think continuing that strategic planning would go a long ways towards greater transparency.
Mike Reynolds.
Correct. That would be one of the things that we've been really working on, and it's an ever-evolving kind of thing to work with, to try to maintain a level of transparency so the public feels comfortable with your decision-making and knowing that there isn't things that are going on that they're not aware of. Many of those things, as Justin mentions, are being, going on with our strategic plan. We hold, one of the other things as we hold our superintendent, you know, when his goals and his directions as far as how he works with his staff, that everything is done above board, and so just some of those measures, we check ourselves as far as a body, seven members, but then we also, that trickles down now to our staff and administration, that they hold everyone accountable, and if we can't do business, we must do business transparently as well, and if we are going to hold our other staff members as well, too.
Thank you. Scott Thaden.
I think the current School Board is doing a pretty good job of being transparent, and I think the current administration has certainly taken steps to improve the transparency of the business side of our education system. I'd like to see more honest discussion, particularly at the School Board and administrative level with our teachers, and finding out exactly what their needs are and finding ways to be able to facilitate those needs.
Thank you. And Tammy.
Well, I think one of the things that would be really beneficial is to have some community meetings that are open to the public, where the School Board would be there to address questions and concerns, take suggestions and ideas as to what's going on, always asking the people who are the stakeholders as well as the community, so that would be all of the staff, to sit down and have maybe quarterly meetings or biannual meetings to say, all right, what's going on? What's going well? What could we improve on? What are your suggestions? Take all of those things back to the Board, and as a Board, work on those to then use that to make sure that we can do what we have a vision to do for as a School Board. And so always talking to the community and stakeholders as well as staff, and then listening to what they have to say, and then taking that in and absorbing it and reflecting to say, okay, we've done that, but maybe we could do this and do it a little differently so that we can hear all the voices in the community because we do have the diversity, and there's a lot of things going on in our world and our state that maybe are trickling down, and we really haven't addressed them because we still have to educate students. So I think having some listening sessions or something like that might be of big help.
Thank you. The next question, and we'll begin with Mike Reynolds. What do you see as the greatest challenge facing the Willmar School Board in 2017, 2018?
Yeah, what I see as the biggest challenge that we have looking, that would be next school year, is getting a new school open, getting a new school staffed, getting smooth operations with school boundaries, getting everything in running order, from not only what teachers are going to go into the new classrooms to what we're going to do with administration, working with the city of Willmar and the county on traffic patterns, making sure that we have budget to pay for everything because we do know that opening up a new building does cost some extra money. We have extra utilities. We have additional staff. Most of our teaching staff and administrative plan will probably work itself out to be an even wash, but we do have custodians and food service and some of those things. And then just getting, running our elementary programs in three buildings of approximately 600 students compared to two buildings of 900-plus students, and just getting sure that we have the passing things go down, lunchtimes down, and again, busing, getting kids to and from the schools, and having those three buildings come together as a homogeneous group because we want them, we want every school to be on the same level of, you know, compared to so not one stands out over the other.
Very good. Scott.
I agree with Mike that that is a huge logistical challenge that our school district faces in 2017, 2018. One of the other challenges is getting a good contract for our teachers that is good for our teachers and is good for the school district. I think all sides would agree that this has gone too long for our teachers. It's a morale issue in the discussions that I've had, and it needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. But if it continues into the 2017, 2018 school year, it's a huge problem.
And Tammy Barnes.
Yes, I agree with Mike that always a new building always brings on new challenges and things, but I believe that the school staff and administration and the School Board are up to doing that job. I can echo what Scott is saying, that really having contracts settled is a necessary piece. It doesn't matter if it's teachers or support staff. Everybody needs to have a contract so that they're able to come into working and knowing what's what and focus on the students. And so that is a huge piece. We can collaborate. It doesn't have to be adversarial. It can actually be sit down, have a conversation, and make sure that everybody knows what's on everybody's mind, and then let's come together and collaborate on how it is that we're going to make this work, because ultimately, that tension and the climate reflects on the students. They know something's not right and things are going, and they can't figure it out, especially elementary kids. It's like, well, what's going on here? And I know that it is something that can be reached and done. I would also say that maybe diversity, looking for teachers of color to be in the district, and we should be fostering the students here to consider being a teacher and being a teacher back in Willmar to then show their colleagues or students, hey, you can do this, too. Thank you.
Justin Boss.
Yeah, I guess I would agree with what everybody else has said. I think the move to the new school will have its challenges, but I would probably also agree that getting the contract settled is probably the biggest weighing issue on the district right now. I think both sides are probably wishing it was done a long time ago, and I think we've had some issues with the past several contracts not being settled in a real timely manner. So I think having some serious discussions, both looking at the Board itself and how we're handling things, but also with Education Minnesota and just seeing what those roadblocks are and trying to find a way in the future to have negotiations move in a more smooth manner and get settled before the current contract expires so that we aren't having teachers teaching without a contract.
Thank you, all of you, for that. The next question is one related to diversity, and we'll begin with Scott. What experience, whether personal or professional, do you have in dealing with our racially diverse school and community?
Well, the big one is happening in my life right now. I am an agriculturalist for the Sugar Bee Co-op. I work with a number of migrant workers. I'm about 75 of them during the harvest time, mostly of Hispanic descent, but I try very hard to communicate with them and understand their cultural differences from ours in the workplace in particular, and there are, there are many. So I have lots of experience doing that. I taught in the Willmar High School with lots of diverse people in my classroom, and I think if you're from Willmar, you deal with diversity every day, and that is one of the unique and wonderful things about our community.
Tammy.
Yes, I actually was a teacher in Worthington for two years, so definitely a very diverse community. I'm aware of the students around Willmar and as well as the entire population. Also, in my job as a field rep for Education Minnesota, I work with diversity all the time. I've had numerous trainings at numerous levels. It is a very important issue and something that needs to always be addressed. It needs to be an open conversation, and it's just an ongoing one that we need to deal with, and so we just need to keep having conversations.
Justin.
Yeah, I would, you know, say with the others, you know, living in Willmar and working in Willmar, you're encountering a diverse population every day, and in working in funeral service, providing funeral services for people of all backgrounds, I've worked with them there. Specifically, I've worked with the Somali community in setting up there. Specifically, I've worked with the Somali community in setting up their mosque for their funeral customs there, and have worked directly with them in setting that up. So that's one specific area. But just generally in employment in Wilmer, you're working with a diverse community.
And Mike Reynolds?
Yeah, throughout my tenure on the school board, as well as when teaching, when I was doing some substitute teaching, and I taught in every building in this district, working with students of all, you know, diverse group of students, been on many committees where I served with people of color and diverse group of people. And it's just to the point where I don't even notice it anymore. I view them as colleagues, I view them as peers. And that's, I think, speaks for a lot of people in our community. And that's what makes, I think, our community and our school district really great, is because we don't see those things. And we're aware of it, and if there's needs that need to be met. But, and also, I've had the, my last son, if you look down in the basement when he was in high school, it was, it was just a very diverse group of human beings downstairs, and lots of laughs. And I've learned a lot from his friends, and they taught me a lot about different customs, whether Hispanic or Somali. And it's been, it's been a learning experience for me as well.
Thank you. The next question is related to contract negotiations, so we'll begin with Tammy. Here's the question. How might you, as a school board member, facilitate successful contract negotiations with teachers?
Well, I do that on a daily basis, and so I would say that the number one thing is communication. Sitting down, having a conversation and peeling away not just what you need and want, but why is it that you need and want that? What are some possibilities that we could do to find some common ground? And it's always best to find the common ground, because negotiations is really about give and take, it's compromise. Nobody gets everything they want, but that's part of being a negotiator. So you have to sit down, you have to listen, you have to ask difficult questions sometimes to really get, peeling back and figure out what is it that really is the issue that is holding back one or both sides to come to the table to have that conversation. And so I bring about four, well, no, probably about 20 years of negotiations, as well as being a teacher, you negotiate it every day in the classroom with the kids. So that's my experience.
Justin?
Yeah, I would agree that communication is the key to making some progress in negotiations. And I think having both sides have a clear understanding of the position of the other side, too. I know recently, the union came in, and we went over all the budget numbers, and I think that was helpful to them to see exactly what a settlement may cost the district in every area. And I think hopefully, meetings like that and hearing from both sides will help lead to a settlement.
Mike?
Well, kind of seems to be a common theme here tonight. And the reason I didn't mention it in my 17, 18, because I am optimistic that the contract is going to be settled soon. But it does take communication, it does take collaboration. We have gotten away from that a little bit. When I first started negotiating contracts on my first term back in 1993, it was a collaborative process, because the adversarial process before I got on the board was kind of, it was, it was just that, it was adversarial. We went to the collaborative approach, and that seemed to work for quite a few years. And in the period that I was off the board, things kind of had changed for that five years that I was off. And when I came back, again, I was on the negotiations committee, and it started, it looked like we were kind of more in an adversarial model. So I think when it comes down to is getting people to sit down, visit with each other, talk. I can say that we've, for the most part, we've reached most of the language items. It's just, it's just, you know, we're stuck on money. And we've offered one, the union has offered another, and it's just, we just need to sit down and look at each other. We have talked to each other a little bit about, we need to get this contract finished, and as we move forward into the next round of negotiations, that we have also conceded that we need to do it a different way. And so I want to get this put to bed, and so we can start a new, a new way of maybe collaborative bargaining again, and move forward into the future.
Scott Payden?
Mike, you're exactly right. When I was a teacher, the negotiations were chosen members of the school board, chosen members of the union, sat down, looked each other in the eye, and said, this is where we're at. And then we went from there. That's where we need to be, and that's the way it should be.
Thank you. The next question is related to tax abatement. We'll begin with Justin. In your opinion, how do tax abatement decisions to help major business and construction companies affect the school district's budget?
I would say in the, in the short term, well, there isn't a real huge effect on it. You know, by giving an abatement, we're just abating that increase in value. So basically, we're staying where we were before. But in the long run, it'll be an increase, because there'll be a higher value on those properties or those businesses after they've been allowed to invest in them. So for, we're giving up a little bit of a higher return for a short period of time to end up with a longer return in the long run. So I think it's a net positive effect on the school budget.
Mike?
That's a really good question, that five years ago, I would have never really given much thought to, because we would get an abatement every, it wasn't often, it was very little. And now it seems like we're getting quite a few more abatement requests as we move forward. And I've kind of gotten to the point where I really have to scrutinize in my own mind, what's the value to the community. And I look at, our school district is dependent on bringing in jobs, bringing in new, new little people that we can educate, because that's how we're paid. We're paid on student headcount. So if the project makes sense from a community perspective, it makes sense from a jobs perspective, bringing in folks to our community to live here, to work here, to play here, and get educated here, is how, is a new standard that I have applied to it as, as I look at them. And I just think that they shouldn't be handed out willy-nilly, because there's a lot of small businesses that don't get that option. But, so again, I think they help the community if they're used for the right purpose.
Scott?
Again, I agree with the other members of the panel tonight. We've gotten into a situation where if we don't give an abatement, they will go somewhere, a business will go somewhere where they will get an abatement. So our vetting process of businesses that are asking for abatements needs to be thorough, considering not just the school district, but the community at large. Because if, if we don't, they will go somewhere else.
And Tammy?
Well, I think that's a difficult question, because as Mike said, there used to not be that many, and now there seems to be more and more coming. I do understand, you know, businesses wanting to come in and provide new businesses and jobs and things. I just would hope that every time that happens, that it is really a thorough scrutinized, and that it is very transparent to the public as to why we're doing this and how long we're gonna do this. And then to make sure that we're very clear that, yeah, maybe we're not gonna get something, you know, the taxes on this for a few years, five, 10, whatever, but we're going to get it later on because of the increase of the property value and things. I think that would be a huge communication piece that needs to be conveyed to the public, because I'm not sure that they're very educated on what it all really means to give a tax abatement.
There is a second question to this particular topic. How will you suggest ways to compensate for the loss of those funds? And we'll start with Justin. How will you suggest ways to compensate for the loss of those funds?
Well, I guess I kind of answered my own question before, because there really isn't a loss of funds, there's a loss of the increase in funds for the time period while the abatement is going on. So there really isn't a significant loss in funds for the tax abatement there.
All right. Mike?
Yeah, just, yeah, Justin's right. There, it's, it's, it's a little different formula with the school district, when you, when you grant a tax abatement. You're still paid your revenue that from the state from you, that you are in your local, your local aid and what comes in based on your student headcount. But again, the, the abatement kind of gets spread across the rest of the tax base. So to our budget, as I understand it, it doesn't get, it's not a decrease like it would be with the city or the county, where they actually don't get that, that tax revenue. Ours, we still get what we're, what we are owed, based on our student headcount, and then it's, it's spread across the gap, it's spread across the rest of the taxpayers. So that's what we have to take into account, what that, what the, you know, the value cost benefit is on that. So that's how I understand it.
Scott?
I think that if properly vetted, and, and we're talking about bringing jobs and families to the Wilmer area, we're looking at a very short period of time where we may or may not have a negative impact on our budget. In the long term, if we have more children and better jobs and a higher tax base in our community, it's better for our school district. So we're, we're investing in our community and in our schools by using the tax abatement tool.
And Tammy?
I think I'll just ditto everybody else, 'cause it sounds, I couldn't say anymore. So thanks, guys.
Now, the next question will begin with Mike. What is the status of music and visual arts, and how supportive are you of this current level?
Well, that is, as we get, the state kind of dictates what they want to test us on, high-stakes testing and stuff. We, those are the areas that seem to kind of take the hit. I think we're doing the most, probably the best we can with what we got. I am not real happy with our current level of offerings, especially in the visual arts. I think music is a struggle. We've cut back a little bit on our elementary offerings, and I think there's, we always keep an eye on that, as well as I know members of the community, it's very important. People tell me that all the time. I've always been a fan of the arts. I had children that were in the musicals and sang in the choir, so it's near and dear to my heart. I do believe that a broad curriculum that includes music, includes art, includes physical education, it helps round our students. I think our forefathers knew what they were doing 150 years ago, when they kind of set this in motion that you have a little bit of each every day, and you learn a little bit every day. And so if there's any way, as we grow into our new school and have some space where we can go out, I will support, wherever the budget will allow us and time, to support the visual arts and the music arts.
Scott?
Well, as a parent of three very involved musicians and singers, they, the arts are very important to my children. And we are doing an excellent job at the secondary level, both at the middle school and at the senior high in our music and visual art programs. Once we get to the elementary, that's where, much like Mike said, the mandates from high above have forced us to get away from those activities more and more. I, I think that's a sad state of affairs for our, our teachers and for our students. We're, our, our art and our music is our culture. And without culture, we are not a community. So we need to build that culture from a very young age, all the way up through. And we're doing a great job at the top, but at the bottom, we've been forced to put that aside to teach to the tests.
Tammy?
Well, I love music, and I continue to participate in that, and I know that research says, people who have music and have had some kind of training in music always do better, because they are able to do a lot of things, because their brain has been trained to do that. Visual arts, again, is a lifelong piece that you can always count on being able to do it, whether it's sewing or painting, or making some other item. It is essential, I think, for children and for us to start at a young age, to do those kinds of things, to give kids what they need to be able to expand and figure out, hey, what am I good at, what do I have a passion at? And then use that in the classroom. There are ways to incorporate and to do some team teaching, I believe, with music and the visual arts. When I did social studies, we did a lot of collaborating. When I was an English teacher, we went down to the technology, and we wrote our books and used the keyboarding skills that we learned. So I believe that there are ways to do that, and I think that we need to look for how it is that we can do that within the budget, or look for some support through the community, because I think community here in Wilmer is definitely a music community.
Justin?
Yeah, I guess I would agree with all the other points that the other candidates have made. I agree with Scott, that I think some of the cuts in the arts are due to just some of the standards there are out there, and such a focus on testing and the math and, and English areas. And as Tammy said, but there are studies that show that having a well-rounded education, which includes arts, improves students' achievement in those other areas as well. So unfortunately, that, some of those things have been cut, and I think the staff we have is doing a great job in the music and art areas. And I think we're lucky to have a group like Music Matters in Wilmer as well, too, that has used private support to allow us to, to keep some of those programs. It's unfortunate that it came to that, but it's great that we have that community's support to, to keep those programs in our schools, too.
Thank you. This question will be directed first to Scott. How do we attract teachers that better reflect the diversity of this community?
That's a tough one. There are, there is, particularly in the technology areas that I'm most familiar with, so industrial technology and agriculture, there is a distinct lack of teachers, period, let alone the lack of teachers of, of diversity. We need to cultivate a climate in our community that is inviting to members of other, other races, minorities, that kind of thing. I'm not sure that we've done a great job as a community in the rest of the state in bringing that message home. I think we do a pretty good job within our community, but outside of our community, I'm not sure that we're doing a great job. So I would, I would work hard to portray Wilmer as inviting and a safe place for anyone to come and live and teach in our school district.
Tammy?
Well, like I said before, I truly believe that you need to cultivate, you need to start in the junior high, even in the elementary, talking to the students who have that kind of teacher feel. They're always helping students, they do it well, they know how to get through to students. And then we need to encourage them in the junior and senior high as to what it means to be a teacher, have them shadow teachers, invite them to come in and talk about financial aid, talk about colleges, talk about how to get scholarships. And then we need to go to the college level, and we need to talk to the colleges about maybe bringing some things out here to Wilmer, to show students, hey, this is what a teacher of color is, this is what you can do, this is your support. I have actually been on a committee with teacher, well, no, students who did not go into teaching, and they're being told by their parents not to go into teaching. All of the students of color from St. Cloud State, their parents told them, don't be a teacher, it's not portable, it's not worth going into. So we have to change how we view teachers, and we need to show the respect and put them back in the integrity where they were, you know, 20 years ago.
Justin?
Yeah, I don't think it's a- Yeah, I don't think it's a, uh, thing that's unique to, uh, getting a more diverse group of teachers. I think we're gonna have a struggle in the future just with getting teachers as a whole. Um, so I think we just really need to, um, open our students' eyes to the teaching profession. And there's gonna be plenty of jobs for them in the future 'cause we have a, a retirement age, uh, teachers. There's a lot of those that'll be retiring in the next few years. And there's going to be, um, a number of jobs. So I think we have a young, you know, our immigrant population is younger. So, um, just that pool out there isn't real large because, um, you know, even my class graduating was, wasn't very diverse. And I think that's been something more new. So hopefully, as we graduate more diverse students, there'll be more students that will return to our schools and fill some of those teaching positions.
Mike?
Well, everyone, yeah, I kind of agree with everyone. This is where I think, when you talk about tax abatement and everything else, this is where the whole community comes together, uh, making rural Minnesota especially, we're talking about Wilmer, uh, a destination. It seems like when our kids go away to the cities, to college, they, they like stay there. They kind of like the, the urban life and they don't come back. And, uh, and that doesn't, irregardless of, uh, you know, what their nationality is. And I think we gotta make our community more attractive from the standpoint of a, a destination where they can, um, maybe find a future spouse. Maybe there's, uh, things they can do, um, as nightlife. And again, especially when it comes to, uh, the diverse, uh, you know, minorities, we need to make, we need to make it welcoming for them and show them that there are opportunities and that this is a place where they can thrive and, and flourish and raise their children and another generation. And, um, it, we're all in this, this together. And I think that, um, Wilmer is a great place. Rural Minnesota is a great place to live. As we said, there's opportunities, uh, for people, for jobs. And again, it's just getting these kids not only into teaching, but to get them to come back out into rural Minnesota.
Thank you. The next question began with Tammy. Do you have any ideas on how to rein in the rising cost for participation in extracurricular activities?
Wow, that's a loaded question. Um, you know, we have to pay staff. We have to have the appropriate equipment. Equipment costs money. And so I guess I would have to really think on that. I am gonna say that I really am not a fan of fundraisers for those kinds of things because I think if we're gonna do it, we need to do it and do it right. We need to have the equipment. We need to have the coaches. And so, um, I guess that's one of those questions I'm gonna have to do a little more thinking on.
Justin?
Yeah, I, um, I think those activities are important to the, the district. And I think there's, um, that's probably something that needs community involvement. And I think there is that out there for scholarships where, um, where the cost of, uh, that activity is a burden on a family. I think, you know, with Cardinal Pride and some of the other organizations out there where there are scholarships available. So, um, maybe increasing those scholarship dollars and also, um, making people more aware of, uh, that there is community help out there, um, so that all students can participate in activities.
Mike?
One quick point in that last question. I just forgot to mention that we have a lot of, uh, we've gotten a lot of past graduates back into our school system is in the paraprofessional, um, kids of color that are helping us, um, especially in the Somali community, being child guides, being, uh, ambassadors in buildings that are our employees. So that's been a good thing. So hopefully we can get some certified staff back. Uh, to the question of, uh, athletics, it costs do go up, costs rise. But the nice thing about our district, we have not raised activity fees. I can't remember the last time we raised the activity fee. It might have been eight years ago. Um, we've held that steady. We do have many programs in place. First of all, if you are free lunch, you do not pay an activity fee. If you are on reduced lunch, you pay a greatly reduced activity fee, almost a nominal charge. If you do not meet the free or reduced, uh, criteria and you're going through a tough patch, you can apply to the found, the Wilmer Public Schools Foundation. And, uh, we will, we've never, and I serve on that, we've never turned down a, a request from anybody. Um, so there's lots of opportunities for kids to participate. And the good news is throughout the years, our numbers continue to rise. So, um, between what we have in place and the kids, you know, desire to play, it seems like we're, um, I hope the programs stay in place so people can participate and not be excluded because of money.
And Scott?
I agree, Mike. Um, I think our, the programs we have in place right now are, are excellent. And I think there, to my knowledge, if someone wants to participate, they are, there is no boundary to their participation as far as monetary funding goes.
Thank you. Onto a question on technology. This question will first be directed to Justin Boss. Could we better utilize interactive TV programs and other technologies to bring in opportunities for Wilmer students or to export programs to other districts such as our Mandarin Chinese classes?
Um, yeah, I think there is use of, uh, technology to, to do some of those things. And that's something that'll probably, um, increase in the future. You know, technology continues to be a, a growing part of, of the workforce and, um, more and more jobs being technology focused. So I think it's, uh, important, uh, to increase technology, not only to increase student learning of technology, but also, um, to use it to bring, um, other courses in that we may not have staff for. So to continue to explore all of those options.
Mike?
You know, when I think about interactive TV, we've, we tried a couple offerings on that, you know, way back. And it didn't seem like it was, we didn't have, I don't think, the greatest success with it. But I, I think it, there's a definite need. I know a lot of the smaller school districts use interactive TV offerings. Uh, we always kind of think wanna have, you know, a child in the classroom in front of a human teacher, um, for, we find, we find that's the highest degree of learning. Um, but there's, I think that's, as we move forward, especially with the more diverse offerings, um, I think that's something that we do definitely as a board need to explore. Um, not many people in our area offer Mandarin Chinese. And maybe that is something where that we could, uh, you know, work with the cooperative and, and broadcast our classes out to other people. And I think that's something that we can, uh, that definitely that our, our cab, administrative cabinet could certainly look into and, uh, look for opportunities to increase, uh, a broader scope of, uh, offerings to our students.
Scott?
In the, I believe it was the late nineties, early two thousands, we had, Joel Brinkman was our media director and worked very hard at trying to, uh, initiate some of that stuff. I think what the, the district found was it's a great idea. It's very expensive. Um, and it takes a highly technological person to coordinate all of that. Um, it's, it's a great idea. I think if we can teach, um, help teach other people, particularly in the, um, in the areas like Mike talked about with Mandarin Chinese, that isn't very, um, popular out there or, or, or available. If we can help out other school districts, great. But it's, it's an expensive and highly technical, um, we need highly technical staff in order to run it. And I think that's why it has not taken hold, uh, as much as it probably could have.
Tammy?
Well, I know, having dealt with teachers who have taught over ITV, there are a lot of issues that have to be addressed, not just the expense, but who's in the, uh, the off-site rooms supervising those students. Because if you have two little screens that you're watching 30 kids on, you're not able to see what all is going on in the classroom. So I would say that there needs to be some better TV. There probably needs to be a lot more looked at as to how that is, uh, transmitted and things. We're already having enough problems with broadband out here and computers. I don't know that we would, um, be able to do it as good as we would like to do it. And so it would take a lot of conversations. The schools around here that do, do ITV classes and stuff, the teachers are really concerned about, are the kids really getting what they would get if they were in my classroom face to face? And being able to, like with Mandarin and stuff, you really need to be able to hear the student as the teacher. And the student needs to hear you as the teacher. And if you don't have a good connection, that doesn't really, um, give a very good lesson for the student or access for the student.
Thank you. The next question, open enrollment. And we'll begin with Mike. In this area, open enrollment has become competitive. As a school board member, how would you address this?
Well, we have been addressing this for as long as open enrollment has been around and I've been on the board. And I think the one thing, if there's, if there is good news with open enrollment as far as the Wilmer Public Schools, our deficit has, um, remained the same for about the past three or four years. We, uh, we, uh, have about a deficit of somewhere in the low 300s where we have, which means we have, uh, more kids leaving our district than coming in. Now, some of those are neighboring, you know, they're on the fringes, on the borders. Okay, that we, we can't really fight that. If you're closer to the Kirkhope High School than you are the Wilmer High School, I get that. But it starts with making our district marketable. And we gotta do the best we can when it comes to educating students, putting programs out not only for education curricula, but for extracurricular, um, and become a, a destination for students, uh, for parents to, you know, to bring their students here. We have to make a, uh, an exerted effort. We try, you know, we, we don't run, we don't run buses into other districts as other districts run their buses into our district and take our students to, uh, other towns. That is an option we could do. But I think it just comes down to is making the Wilmer Public Schools the best school in the area.
Scott?
Um, I think our school district is doing a great job, uh, educating the, um, top-tier students and also the students that need extra help. Uh, we, in order to become the best school in the area, we need to make sure that we're not missing the, the kids in between. Um, providing a, an everyday yeoman's work education for the kids that may not be the Rhodes Scholar. Uh, but maybe they're your mechanic or your electrician or your plumber, um, or, um, somebody who makes sure that, um, you are dressed every day, uh, and that you're taken care of. Um, so we need to provide that for all of our students. And I think that we're getting there. But when we get that whole gamut of educating everyone to the top of their ability, that's when we become a school of choice and when, when people come to Wilmer to go to school.
Tammy?
Yes, open enrollment. What an interesting beast it's become. Uh, I think we need to, again, have, as Scott said, we need to have a variety for all types of learning, for all kinds of students to be interested in coming to Wilmer, whether it's the technological things, whether it's a hands-on learning experience. Uh, we need to be looking at, what are we offering? What is it that we should be offering for maybe the future? And is it, um, gonna be helpful to students? Always being able to collaborate and communicate are the two top things businessmen always say. They don't know how to communicate or how to collaborate. They have to be respectful. They have to know, they gotta do some work. So how we, um, do those classes and things are the things that we need to start integrating those into the classes. And we really need to be looking at what could be in the future. Let's look at Star Trek and say, hmm, maybe we ought to be a little more like those guys and be looking to the future and be innovative in what we're doing and how we're doing it. So I think that we can reduce our open enrollment if we do some of those things.
And Justin?
Yeah, I think, uh, I agree with what Mike said. It's about marketing our schools, too. I, you know, I see a lot of the area districts putting ads in the paper about, you know, attracting students to their schools. I think we haven't really done that as a district. And I think, uh, the Wilmer Public Schools offers a lot of programs that some of the schools around us don't and, um, have some strengths that they don't. And there are some things we could fix as well to, to make our schools better. But I think marketing our strengths to the other districts around, not only to keep kids that may be leaving elsewhere, staying here, but maybe, uh, drawing some more in from other districts as well.
Thank you. Here are questions, and I'm gonna combine these two questions. And we will begin with Scott on this one. What are you hearing are top concerns of teachers in our district and the top concerns of parents of those children in our district?
The top concerns with the teachers that I've talked to is, um, the psyche of our, of our teachers, uh, is low right now. The morale is low. Uh, that has everything to do with working without a contract. Um, that would be the number one issue. Uh, I think number two for the teachers are the unfunded, particularly the unfunded mandates, but mandates, um, that come from, uh, a, um, position where it may or may not be suitable for all of the students in our district. Um, and yet they're put in a box and are no longer allowed to teach, but they have to teach to a curriculum that is, is quite regulated. Those are, those are the two main things that I hear, um, from parents, uh, classroom size. And, um, that's, that's been an issue for as long as I've been associated in Wilmer. Uh, classroom size and the number of people. And the question that I get asked is how can I be an effective teacher when I have 32 kids in a, in a, um, English class in the, in the high school? So not a, not a great, powerful, uh, curriculum or, or subject matter that needs to be handled. But those are the biggest ones that I hear from parents as well.
Tammy?
Certainly the teacher contract because that does affect morale. And it also affects whether or not a teacher is gonna continue to stay in the district, whether or not we're gonna keep the best of the best that we currently have. Uh, also, I would say, yes, there are mandates and special ed is one of those areas where special ed teachers have paperwork from the state and the feds. And we need to look at how, how it is that we're delivering special ed, how we're using our teachers. Is there a way that we can help them to be able to get their paperwork in? Because if they don't, there are ramifications from both the state and the feds by not meeting timelines. So, and I would say, you know, being able to offer classes that are meeting the needs of the kids. Parents, um, I'll be honest, I haven't talked to a lot of parents. Um, but I'm going to assume a lot of them are always worried about class size because that's been a never-ending thing. As a teacher, I always wondered how I could do as good a job with 30 kids versus when I had only 15. I do a much better job with the lower number. But, um, I think parents, if they have concerns, that they need to be talking to the board members and always know that their voice is important. So talk to your board.
Justin?
Yeah, I guess I would agree with what the others have listed from the, the teachers. I would say the unsettled contract is definitely the, uh, main issue here about from, from them, um, along with, uh, some of the, the mandated things, which I think has changed somewhat, uh, with redoing how some of the PLCs are run from the past and things. So I think there's been some improvement there in their eyes as well, too. And, uh, a little bit better morale on some of those things from, I think, parents. Um, it's just the classroom setting, like the others have said, the, the instruction and the, the size there and, uh, just being concerned about the quality of education their students are receiving.
Mike?
Yeah, um, I agree that they, I think the biggest concern from the teachers that I hear, again, is this is their, their overall mental health. Um, starting from the contract, um, start going down to the standards that they're, are, are, well, I, you know, they're forced to teach to. It's what we have to do. Um, it takes away some of their creativity. It also, they just don't have enough time to get their work done in the school day. And that's problematic in a sense that they have to take some of that home then. And then that affects their family life. And that just kind of, it's a spiral. So we've gotta find ways to make sure that they can get their work done within their school day. So when the, when the bell rings, they can go home and be with their families and do the things that they enjoy. So those kind of all culminate into one. Parents? Parents, one of the biggest things that I hear is safety. They want to make sure that their kids are safe. With some of the issues that we see going on in our community, state, across the country, parents have a true concern that their children are safe when they send them off on the school bus or drop them off at the front door. So again, that, I take that very seriously. Also, classroom size, we've done a very good job of holding the elementary classroom size in the grade levels, but the overall size of the buildings, the amount of people inside the buildings, getting their kids so they don't have to eat their lunch in five minutes. They can enjoy that. Some of that will be solved with the new building. So some of the things that I've heard from parents.
Thank you. Another question, and we'll begin with Tammy. What should be done to cultivate administrative and teacher excellence across the district?
Well, I definitely think you have to have ongoing communication, and that may be meeting in monthly with the educators of each of the different buildings and the administration, and then do a collaborating of maybe the three elementaries and then the middle school and the high school, but then also collaborating district-wide. And it really is about getting together and, again, talking, listening, working on a compromise that's workable and doable, and looking always through the lens of what's best for our Wilmer students. We should always be looking at, we have Wilmer students that we need to be successful and productive. What is it that we need to bring and give to them as a district, as a board, as staff, as administrators? We need to be looking at that and working on giving them the best of everything that we possibly can, and maybe even pushing the envelope a little bit and going outside our comfort zone to meet their needs, because they are the next generation.
Justin.
Yeah, I would agree with that, that communication is the key there, I think, with the cabinet meetings between Dr. Holm and all the administrators sharing ideas there and what's working, what's not, and bouncing those off each other. And I think for everyone, just continued education as well to, from our administrators to our teachers, just always looking for new opportunities to broaden your perspective on things.
Mike.
You've hit the high points, but I think one of the things that we do hold Dr. Holm accountable for as a board is, again, to develop his administrative staff and to push his staff to get better. And have his staff, have the administrative staff push their staff to participate in ongoing education and those kinds of things. And I do think that the admin cabinets that Dr. Holm has proceeded over has really done a nice job of getting people on the same page. Dr. Holm spends a day, a week in the buildings for coaching and listening, again, pushing people to be their best. Again, it's, again, finding time to get, to have staffs get together to collaborate. And last year, we were pretty lucky. We didn't have, we were able to get all of our in-services done last year due to weather, so it was great. And the other thing that we instituted a year ago, not this year, but maybe it was that last year, was a peer mentoring program where new teachers were assigned a veteran teacher. And that veteran teacher took that student, that teacher, under their wing for a whole year and kind of showed them the ropes, if you will. And I think that's a great program, I think, is working out, again, make people feel comfortable about the Wilmer Public Schools.
Scott.
Time is very important to a teacher. Time to deal with the students, but also time to converse, not only with other teachers, but to converse with the administration and say, I need this. This would, we could do this, and it would be really cool. The creativity that we're, that our teachers are not allowed because of time constraints and curriculum constraints is really, it's, that's hurting our teachers and it's hurting our students' education. The best teachers, the very best teachers I had were the ones who didn't have to stick to the curriculum or had ways of making that curriculum fun. And I think that the creativity, we are not allowing our teachers to have enough creativity. But again, like Mike said, I recognize it's a time issue. There's so much to do in a day, and there's only so many meetings that you can have. We have to contact students and be a part of their lives. But it would be wonderful, in a panacea, it would be wonderful to have our teachers be as creative as they wanted to be in the classroom.
Thank you. This is going to be the final question before your closing remarks. And it'll start with Justin. It's a question on evaluation. What criteria would you expect to be a part of an effective evaluation for our school district superintendent?
We have our annual evaluation of superintendent every year, in that there's goals set every year. So I think those will change over time as some goals are met and new goals arise. So I think always having that vision of where we want our district to be is important in that evaluation process, to know what we need to improve on and what new issues may arise that superintendent may need to address. So I think setting those goals and then measuring the progress each year is part of that evaluation.
Mike.
We have gone through, over the past many years, we've gone through lots of variations of different superintendent evaluation forms and processes. We keep trying to improve on the tools that we use to give clear direction, in this case to Dr. Holm, but in the past, Dr. Kiergert, Mrs. Ledham, and past superintendents. Again, it's the one we're using now, involves taking input from all the board members, things that they've heard in the community or from staff, apply them to goals that we have set previously, and then we use the feedback to set the ongoing goals for the next year for our next evaluation. Again, it's a very important tool that we, like I said, we're not, we haven't been happy with it each time we've done the evaluate, I mean, we improve and take it to the next level. And then we also hold that, we hold our superintendent accountable as well when he does his evaluations. And then, again, that comes down now with classroom observations by the administrator with the teaching staff. So we want it fair. We want to give people a clear direction of where they are, and if there's opportunities for improvement, we want to lay that out for them. If they're doing something well, we also want to let them know that they're doing well.
Scott.
The criteria needs to be very specific and goal-oriented, and it's a checkbox. Are you meeting the goals? Are you making progress toward the goals or not making those goals? That's pretty simple and straightforward. That's how I am evaluated in my job, and that's, I guess, how I would evaluate how the administration is doing.
And Tammy.
Well, any evaluation system, I think, takes on more than just the board evaluating the superintendent. I think that all of the employees of the district should be evaluating superintendent and the board. And I think that you should know upfront, here are the things that we are looking at in your leadership characteristics. There are twenty-one good characteristics that are out there for leadership, and a superintendent should be a leader of the district. So then, seeing that those are measurable goals, that they're attainable goals, that they're going to be things that really matter to the Wilmer School District, and those are the things that we would want to focus on. Again, wherever a job is well-done, you always want to show your gratitude and your appreciation for that, and where there is something that needs to be worked on, you want to give support and suggestions for how you could do better, or what it is specifically that in this area we don't think you're doing as well as we could do. So I think when you're doing an evaluation, you have to be very clear and succinct, and you also have to be helping, supporting, and providing the help and support that the individual may need.
Thank you. And thanks to all of you for all the very good answers to many questions. I got a brief email, we received a brief email from Jackie Salisbury that I would like to read for the public's knowledge before we begin closing remarks. My apologies for not being able to attend tonight. Work and a personal move were priority tonight, and I was unable to attend. I did submit answers to questions for the Chamber of Commerce and the West Central Tribune, which will be published. Again, good luck to all the candidates, and my apologies for not attending. Jackie Salisbury. For closing remarks, each candidate will have two minutes for their closing remarks, and we will begin with Tammy and then move to the right.
All right. Well, I'd like to thank everyone who's interested in the school board and, of course, the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. It's been a very interesting forum. I am ready to bring my seventeen years of experience as an educator to the school board. I am eager to listen, build collaborative relationships, and help us prepare the Wilmer students for the future. And that, again, means providing the best education for our students. When they graduate, we want them to be able to communicate, collaborate, think for themselves, be respectful of people who disagree with them, and also know the value of hard work and honesty. Our school board needs to support the people who make that happen. That would be the dedicated educators and support staff in the district, and they educate the students day in, day out, and year by year, and we want to make sure that it's a safe and welcoming school for everyone. I just wanted to touch on a couple things that I maybe didn't make clear. Diversity also, I was neglected to say that I participated in that YMCA safety training. That was a very fun event, really fun. I actually worked at the young man who didn't want to get in. He got in and he came back a second time. So adults giving kids that attention draws those kids out, and they're going to do what they can do and do their best. So I really think that we need to involve the community. We need to have conversation. We need to get the contracts settled. We need to work as a good group. I know that you did interest-based many years ago, and that was a good thing, and I think we need to go back to that kind of a system and listen to all of the stakeholders, community, staff, administration, and the board. Everybody needs to be a part of that, and I'm ready, willing, and able to do that. Thank you.
Justin Boss.
Yes. I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters again for putting on this forum and for all those that submitted questions tonight and that are watching or listening tonight or in the future on the web as well. I was fortunate, as I said before, to be elected to fill the vacant seat back in May. In that short time, I've learned a lot about the school board, and I hope I can continue to do that. I feel that our school district is doing a great job, and we need to continue to provide a well-rounded education to all the students in our district, from those that have some learning difficulties to our high achievers and everyone in between, and continue to have a great school system that not only prepares our students for their future, but also is a great draw for teachers to come here and for businesses. And strong school is a vital part of a strong community. So would appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve on the board in the future.
Mike Reynolds.
Yes, I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for this, providing this medium for us to express who we are and what we want to try to accomplish as members of the Wilmer School Board. My wife and I made a choice to move back to Wilmer in the early nineties and was to raise our children. It was the best decision, I think, we ever made. Public education is always changing, and in many cases, the only constant in education is change. The Wilmer Public Schools continues to evolve to meet the challenges of public education. We have a new school opening up this fall, and that is really exciting, as well as all the other additions to the middle school and the high school. Very exciting time to be part of the Wilmer Public Schools. I feel blessed that I have had the honor to serve these past years as a member of the Wilmer Public School Board. I have a passion for education and a passion for kids. I have had the privilege in my tenure to watch over six thousand students clad in red robes walk across that stage at graduation and off into the world. Our student population comes to us with a wide variety of skills and levels of readiness, and the biggest challenge to any board or any education in school system is to make sure we have provided these students with all of the best tools and education possible so they can be ready for the next chapter of their lives, no matter where that chapter takes them, whether it's to the service, to a job, to a two-year school, to a four-year school. Wherever, we want to make sure that they leave Wilmer School, Wilmer Public Schools the best prepared that we can make. I have always represented all students and all parents with an open mind and without any personal agendas. Yes, we have work to do, and I have the leadership ability and the proven experience to help make, take this district to the next level. I have enjoyed serving the constituents of Wilmer Public School District 347. I want to continue to serve you, and I'm asking for your vote on November eighth. Thank you.
And Scott Payton.
Andrea, thank you very much for facilitating tonight, and thank you to the League of Women Voters as well. As a parent of three school-aged children, I believe that our communities are only as strong as the school districts within our community. I believe that I'm in a unique position, having been a teacher, that to communicate with teachers and also the private sector where I am now, and to bring both of those experiences to the school board. And I would appreciate your vote on November eighth.
Thank you. Thanks again to all of you. I want to just make a couple of closing remarks. We members, we are fifty-strong, the Wilmer Area League of Women Voters, very proud of our history in providing candidate forums. And next week is our last for this season. It is a forum for those that are running for county commissioner. It'll be next Tuesday, seven o'clock, right here in the chambers of the city council. So I invite people to tune in next week, come and join the audience. We surely appreciate the participation and the good questions that we get. Again, a reminder about November eighth. Get out to vote, and know that anyone that's not able to vote on the eighth can go to our county building and vote tomorrow if they need to. Voting is open until the seventh of November, and then those votes have to be gathered and tallied on the seventh to prepare for the final tally on the eighth. So keep that in mind. The important thing is make your voice known with voting, voting here in Candelario County. Reminder to all of you, we have on-demand, available to each one of you. If you would like to hear this again, invite neighbors and friends to listen. It's an important, important forum. So go to the city website, wilmermin.gov, go to KWM Radio, and you can listen to the videotape for tonight. We also have it on our Facebook page of the Wilmer Area League of Women Voters. And special thanks also to our West Central Tribune for being here tonight, taking notes. You will probably read about this in tomorrow morning's paper. So, good night to all of you and hope to see you next week for our final candidates forum. Thank you.